While we're waiting for another member of the board, I'm just going to take up a couple of housekeeping items, business items. First thing I'd like to do is call the meeting to order. A roll call.
Member Barry present?
Member me present. By way of guidelines, I've read this before, but the planning board reserves the right to administer host summoned witnesses, call for the production of papers, cross-examination, and cross-examine any person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess, limit date, inspect the subject site or buildings during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearing for cause. The order of business will be announced by the chairman. All questions will be directed to the chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise hand, raise your hand for recognition from the chair. When recognized, please stand, state your name and address, specific interest in the proceeding, and special credentials if any pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within context of the hearing matter. Hearing is being stenographered and taped for public record. The planning board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, and repetitive or harassing presentation. Cross-examination between parties and interests or any other person will be permitted only after due recognition from the chair. All documents, papers, and plans introduced in the hearing shall be clearly identified by the name or by some other designation, and the person so introducing them shall also be identified by name and address. A planning board exhibit letter will be assigned to each submittal unless the submittal has been specifically identified by an exhibit letter. An excerpt from case law cited, the complete text of the findings shall be furnished to the planning board within 14 days. And one other. And pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The first item under business is the minutes from the meeting of May 11, 2016. The board has had an opportunity to review them, if there is a consent, obtain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Second discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
So move. The only other business item we have, the planning board review and a vote on the request by the building approval extension of 54 Berlin Street, planning board case 2013-04. Mr. Stevens?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members. The applicant for this case had a petition, planning department, for a one-year extension on his special permit that was granted. We typically do have special permits that go to two years. The decision that was given at the time expressed one year. We typically would not have any issue with this and was looking to take that matter before the board. I did receive communication, I had a phone discussion and communication with the Director of Inspeccional Services, Jay Duca, who indicates that we would be within our rights to extend that planning board permit by one year to allow the applicant to move forward. However, Mr. Duca identified that this project also received a ZBA variance which was granted in April 21, 2010, and in fact, that variance has expired, and there's no opportunity for approval. So we are going to not recommend any extension on the planning board permit case, and we're going to instruct the applicant to meet with the Director of Inspeccional Services, and in all likelihood, we'll need to refile on that case. So that's in your packets, there is that communication from Jay Duca, so that's where the case stands at this time.
So we'll advise the applicant of the planning board's recommendation and direct it to the Director of Inspeccional Services.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Call, roll call again?
Member Lynn present?
Thank you. Okay, we now have four members present. The first item is a continued public hearing, the rear of 264 West Street, site plan special permit, planning board case 2016-05, continue from June 8. Client have a recommendation? Take him. The applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Evan Fleming, I'm here on behalf of Stephen Bayless, Web West Street Properties LLC. We did have, as you know, Mr. Chairman, a full presentation of the proposal at the first planning board hearing, and since that time, we've, as of last night, we appeared again before the zoning board appeals, continued the matter after a full presentation. What was raised during that meeting was a question, an issue raised by the abutting neighbor relative to certain survey markers that were installed along the property line that raised some questions about, I guess, a property line dispute. Mr. Stephen Conley, who's the abutting neighbor, is here tonight, and I know his attorney, Brian Conley, is also here tonight. I've had some brief conversations just about a half an hour ago with Brian, where they indicated an interest in continuing conversation and trying to resolve the matters. Although we certainly want to work cooperatively with the abutting neighbor of the property to resolve concerns about the property line, we feel as though we can do so appropriately before the next hearing, before the zoning board appeals, because as the board will shortly learn from the planning department, the applicant has worked diligently for the last several months in addressing all of the comments and concerns of the city's departments, as well as, if peer review consulted, would it be current to address issues that are really the privy to this board and the jurisdiction of this board which relate to the site plan approval process as opposed to any dimensional relief that's being requested of the development. And as such, our hope was that we could kind of finalize or move to finalize this matter here tonight, and then deal with issues related to the property line dispute at the zoning board appeals. And I'm saying this out of respect for Mr. Brian Conley and Stephen Conley, the Butters, because I have great respect for both of them. I hate to delay this process any further. As you know, Mr. Chairman, this is our third time now before the planning board, we continued it. The last time, really, for the purposes of addressing concerns that were raised by peer review, and I know that we've done that to date, but I'll leave it to the board's discretion whether or not they believe or are comfortable in moving this matter forward today. Again, it's our absolute intent to continue the discussion with the Conleys, as my client was at Mr. Conley's property today, just a half an hour ago, trying to work through concerns that he may have of the property line. The result of the survey, just so you understand, is that survey markers were installed, and the issue that Mr. Conley raises is that those survey markers were installed in his driveway, the driveway of his property that abuts the site, and he has some questions about whether they are appropriately marked and the impact that it may have on his driveway. So I believe that we can deal with that for the zoning board, but again, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it to the board's discretion as to how you want to handle it. With respect to this proposal, however, I'll leave it to the planning department's recommendation, which I believe that they can simply indicate how we've responded to all the comments and concerns. You know, a couple of questions were raised at the initial hearing before this body, certainly, and those concerns continue, the neighborhood's concerns continue, primarily relative to density, existing traffic conditions on West Street, and they also raised questions about the ability of the driveway to appropriately service and provide access for two vehicles and fire apparatus. As you'll see in your package tonight, there's a letter from the fire department indicating that the fire department is comfortable, that access to the property will be safe for fire apparatus. And we also showed on our revised site plan that we have for you in your packet, in a small setting on that site plan where we show two vehicles passing each other in the driveway, so that the driveway is adequate for that needs as well. So with that, Chairman, I'll leave it to the board's discretion.
Okay. This is a continued public hearing. Anyone would like to speak? Attorney Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Conley, and I'm here representing Stephen Conley, who is my first cousin. Stephen gave me a call today to thank Attorney Fleming. I will admit, I'm just quickly getting up to speed this afternoon on a matter. He was able to take my call and hear our concerns, so I don't want to profess to have all the answers, but I do think I can articulate quite a few questions and concerns that I think are worth the board considering on the project. If I could just hand you some materials that Steve and Conley emailed in today that I suspect, given how quickly some of these facts have come, you probably haven't gotten yet, but these are his letters that he has emailed in to the planning office, which explains some new issues, and then here's a picture of his driveway. The driveway, the blue car, is Stephen's, the Butters driveway. And I completely appreciate Attorney Fleming's point about getting to finality and not continuing indefinitely, but we actually think there's some new information for the board, and also new information for the planning staff, that I think they would not have had when they were drafting their recommendation, which is on Sunday, Stephen found a spike in the middle of his driveway from the survey air, and apparently, the proponents' position is that the property line splits right down the driveway. So in fact, that car you see there, according to the proponents' view, and if this project is developed as planned, would no longer be allowed on the driveway. I think you could understand why that would cause tremendous concern. I think there's a big ambiguity about what the property line really is, but I think certainly having clarity in the property line is very important in figuring a project like this. Stephen has hired a survey air, and I think there is some discrepancies. We don't have clarity in what the property line is, but I think that's an important point that the planning staff, sure, we're not, they couldn't have been aware beforehand. And so I think one request we would make is, we think it'd be appropriate for the planning staff not to deliver its recommendations to the planning board tonight until it's had a chance to consider what the property line really is and make that determination, because I think if you were to find out that the property line isn't, as was suggested by the developer, you might have a very different view of this. So what we would, as our first request, would be to suggest that this be continued. You know, with time, these things can be answered, the board may have clarity, perhaps the parties can work out something that satisfies both of them on how to move forward, and that would be the best case. So we would ask you to continue the hearing until the next time the planning board meets. If you're not able to do that, we would certainly, you know, request that you oppose the project. In my quick review, I see it has no frontage at all, and I see that its access, if I'm right, is a 20-foot wide easement. I'd be hard pressed to imagine expanding development rights over a 20-foot wide easement. It's one thing to sort of redevelop the same use, but to substantially increase the use on access like that, to me, would be very unusual for the city to do. So respectfully, we would ask if you could, we would ask that the planning staff could consider this property line before delivering its recommendations to the board, and we'd ask the board if it could continue to allow these things to be answered, and absent that answer, we would request the rejection. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak on this? Sir, identify yourself.
My name's Evan McDonough, I live at 3/15 Slidewrath.
Yeah.
Let me take that.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Good. Hi, this is Evan McDonough, I live at 3/15 Slidewrath. I'm a Butter, I'm in the back of this development, and one thing I want to say is, and it's been said, it has no frontage, so technically, it should be allowed zero added property. Now, the square footage, he's putting in twice the amount of square footage housing that is called for, but the zoning at Quincy. My biggest concern is the setback that abuts my property is 15 feet. The zoning is 25 on the development type that he's trying to put in. That's an extra 10 feet. Now, that is a four-unit, three-story building that's going to be abutting my house. What's that going to do to my property value? Also, the means to get in is a right-of-way, an easement. Now, I looked this up on the internet, and it says, "The legal right of a right-of-way, a privilege to pass over land of another where the holder of the easement requires only reasonable and usual enjoyment of the property." Well, this is not usual enjoyment. The owner of the property is against this, he was at the zoning board last night, he's not here now, but does he have the right to dig up that right-of-way with the owner of the property that does not want this? That's a question I'd like to have answered. Also, the safety of this road, if it is truly where it is on the Butters property, that's seven and a half feet from his property bulkhead. What's going to happen in the winter when we get a big snowstorm? There's a safety issue that snow could plow and cover his bulkhead, a kid could be running up out of the bulkhead into the driveway that is seven and a half feet away. I honestly don't believe, if you do look at his package of where it shows a fire truck, fire truck is an average eight feet wide. If you scale that, it doesn't show the lines on his development package, but the roadway on West Street, the center line is 12 feet. Eight feet and five feet is a foot in the oncoming traffic for that to make that swing. I honestly don't think he can make that. Now, the workers are going to be here, they're not going to be able to park on site, because it's going to be a tight site. It's West Street, you can't park on West Street. That means they're going to be parking on the Butters property, and I know they're going to be parking on my street, and they're going to be cutting through my yards to get to the yard, because nobody's going to walk a half a block around the corner to get to work on that. And the last thing is, he's going for a hardship. What is his hardship? A true hardship has never been disclosed to date on what he's looking for in this development. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak on this issue?
I went to the property after the meeting last night, at the meeting, they said that that driveway was 20 feet, and I have a Prius, and I went up the hill, and it can't be no more than 10 feet, okay? Then I went there before this meeting, and the person that owns the property was there, I saw them talking to the people, they're actually blocking that driveway, so I couldn't pull into that driveway, okay? But one thing I noticed is that there's a telephone pole right on the street that is not within 20 feet of that easement, and there's a tree to the left. So if you go over to the left, I'm not sure if they're disputing the property line on the right, there's a fence there, but there's no way it's 20 feet, and if it is 20 feet, you're going to have to take down that telephone pole. And are you guys in charge of telephone poles planning, or is that a zoning thing? I mean, it's basically, I would challenge, you know, everybody, I'm not sure if you guys have gone to the property and actually driven up it, it also slopes down a lot, and there's a disabled lady that lives across the street, and it goes like right into her front windows. So in the morning, when no cars can get out, because all the cars are backed up, it's only about 100 yards from the light, if there's multiple cars that are coming out, and you would think every single person that buys a condo there or rents there are going to be working-class people, there's going to be many people every morning, there's going to be a backup in that driveway trying to get out, and those cars are only going to be able to get out one at a time, and there's just so many issues. So I mean, the bottom line is that it should be continued, they should figure out what happens in zoning in two weeks, that was continued, and that would be the prudent decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak on this issue? Anyone else wants to speak? Hearing not, motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
Should I bring it up now?
Sure.
So I did go to the site, I drove to the site, and I have a lot of questions. I look back, I think the first appearance prior to my coming over board, so I wasn't sure if I had all the information about the project. I looked at the files, and it was unclear to me, and I'm glad this gentleman brought that up, because my concern was obviously the width of the driveway, but I think I understand that that was going to be widened under some agreement with the Butters, correct? But if not, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but it was the same issue, the turn, it was really tight with the utility pole there, and I couldn't figure out how that was going to work for, you know, increased traffic and cars that were bigger than mine. So I just would want to articulate the fact that I have some serious concerns and questions about the project going forward, and I'd like to make a motion to continue it.
Okay, there's been a motion made, is there a second to the motion? Second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's been made, so we won't take any further testimony. Will be continued to our August 24 meeting. Next item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for 500 Commander Shay Boulevard, Boston Scientific Center. Anyone want to speak? Planning board case 2016-07. Is there some correspondence on this case? Two?
Yes, it's in your pack.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a continuous for the audit.
Okay, so there's been a request, a written request, signed by Matt Snell, requesting that the planning board continue this to allow for further discussions to our next meeting, which is the 24th of August. Is there a motion for that, sir? Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. So we will continue. The next item is also a continued public hearing for 60 Fetterly Court, site plan, special permit, planning board case 2016-04. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, Christopher Harrington, I represent the applicant, Joseph Taylor, who's the owner of property 60 Fetterly Court. At our last hearing, there was one question that Mr. Burke needed to resolve, it was related to the groundwater level on the property, he was asked to dig another test pit and get that information and bring that back to you before you made a decision, and he has that information this evening.
Good evening, Jim Burke with the Snell Burke Associates. We did do that test pit, got a little bit of a larger machine, went down 13 feet, didn't find any groundwater, found nothing but gravel, so the drainage system, as it was proposed, soils confirmed its design and potential installation. We also got a traffic letter from the Quincy Traffic Department. We addressed some of those issues as well in this revised set, site distances and traffic movements around the driveways and everything. We also had a couple of standard tech peer review letters, they were great. We worked out some additional revisions, scrubbing and stuff like that. We've got a final letter from them yesterday afternoon, and I think it's that day I've shown up there, the revision date of the 11th, and I have a set, as they've requested, package right there. So I think if you have any questions, other than soils were the big thing, but there are a couple other just minor plan edits that we went through, I think we're in good shape. So if you have any questions, it's all right to hear.
Any board members have a question for Mr. Burke? Anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Counsel? All in the city?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hope you're enjoying yourself here, the government never sleeps, right? We, I mean, I had an opportunity, several occasions, to not only visit the site and have a neighborhood meeting, but have multiple discussions with the Butters in that particular area, and if you're familiar with the area, which I'm assuming many of you are, it's a little more spread out, probably take this type of footprint over in that section, including Point. I know that commitment from Mr. Taylor has been, you know, he's deliverable, he's out of high-quality materials, both interior and exterior, and that's the best of my understanding, and I have read all the comment letters being up to this evening, he has successfully passed all the benchmarks from a city standpoint, and there were no noticeable objections whatsoever from the neighborhood, and I actually think it's a good project. It's going to take a pretty, we'll call it blighted, to be fair, property out of commission and replace it with its four, right, four high-end townhomes, so I think it's a pretty good addition for it, and by the way, it's got the parking. It's got the parking, very important. So that's my comments there, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Counsel. Any board members have a question for the Counsel?
I just wanted to, for the Council to benefit, because there was a lot of back and forth, but when the project was first proposed, we put in a number of questions for the applicant, and I agree with your sentiments exactly, and I think that one thing that really stood out was the landscaping plan and the configuration of the property on the site, site of in one, that to go unnoticed.
Yeah, no questions, certainly. I thought I think one of those garages could literally fit an MTA bus in there, so parking is one of those things you'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it, and this particular project, I wholeheartedly believe we have, so that's very important to me, and I know the folks that are already investors in that area as homeowners and residents, so.
Any other questions for the Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counsel Harrington, any other further comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think that Mr. Burke and people in his office have answered every question that came up from the peer review engineer, as well as city departments, and all the comments that we received on this project. Thank you.
Does it stand a motion to close the public hearing? Second, discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. This project is seeking site plan approval only, there's no other relief for this project to be given by the board. The project has received variances from the zoning board for front and side yard setbacks, floor area ratio, and a lot area per dwelling unit. They have, at this time, addressed all outstanding issues with peer review and department comment letters, and I am prepared to make a recommendation with condition.
Right.
Recommendation number one, the applicant shall adhere Recommendation number one, the applicant shall adhere to the requirements of the city's tree ordinance. Number two, any current or future owners of the property shall be required to submit a copy of the completed stormwater management systems inspection forms annually to the City of Quincy Department of Public Works in order to prove stormwater management systems and operations and maintenance plan. Number three, prior to any building permits being issued, the applicant will perform a water flow test with the city's water department. Number four, the applicant shall be required to consult with the city engineer, Department of Public Works, and/or water department for their preferred method of backfill between the proposed sewer service and existing water main in Raycroft Street, where said sewer service will cross under the existing water main. The applicant shall adhere to any recommendations by the city for a type of fill to be used. Number five, the applicant shall obtain approval of the sewer connection from the Department of Public Works prior to applying for building permit. Number six, it is crucial that any activities proposed for this development not cause rodent problems for Butters. Prior to obtaining a demolition or building permit, the applicant must submit a rodent control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval at least ten days prior to any site activities. Rodent control practices must continue through the duration of the construction phase of this project. Number seven, the applicant should develop a dust control plan to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number eight, the applicant shall commit to conformance with both local and state regulations regarding noise, since this project will, is within the residential neighborhood and construction could create noise generating activities. Number nine, the applicant shall submit a pre-demolition survey to the Health Department for any potential asbestos-containing materials to be conducted by a licensed, DLI-certified inspector. If asbestos-containing materials is present, it must be removed by a licensed contractor, and post-abatement inspection must be performed by a DLI-certified project monitor. Number ten, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the traffic engineer for review and approval at the same time that the building permit application is submitted for review by the Inspeccional Services Department. Review of the construction management plan will take a minimum of two weeks. Number eleven, the construction management plan shall include, but is not limited to, the following items. Subsection A, traffic management plans for any sidewalk replacement, curb ramps, or utility construction. Subsection B, truck route for deliveries to and from the highway. Subsection C, construction signage. D, construction work hours, days. E, hours, days for deliveries of construction material. F, erosion control plan, including construction entrance and fencing. G, a schedule of work being done on the site, onsite and offsite. H, location of the construction fencing and gate on a plane with crushed stone apron. I, length of construction. J, traffic management plan for utility work. K, the detour route for vehicles. L, the route for pedestrians, including any ADA requirements, signage, and safety requirements. M, construction site plan for barrier signage. N, the following statement should be included in the plan, provide, in quotation marks, provide the city's traffic engineer three business days notice that construction will begin, end quotation. And O, provide description of any work being done in the street and provide a traffic management plan to perform this work for approval by the city's traffic engineer. Condition number twelve, the applicant shall be required to contact the city's engineering department for street obstruction and street opening permit, which will include the approved construction traffic management plan attached to the permit request application. Thirteen, any proposed regulatory sign shall be formally submitted via a letter and plans, which will include type of sign, location of sign, and why it is needed to the city's traffic engineer at least twelve weeks prior to desired installation and prior to any building permits being issued. Any signs being installed on public ways will need prior approval by the city council. Fourteen, the hours for construction activities will be as follows, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, and all construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless approval is obtained from the chief of police. And finally, number fifteen, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the planning department and city engineer the digital file as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, defining total site facilities, and rights of way.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions from the board members in the recommendation? Is there a motion? So a second to the motion?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to ask the boards' indulgents to go back to the 264 West Street, and given the motion to continue, the board could consider withdrawing its motion, and second, to close the public hearing, thus affording the opportunity for general comment on the 24th of August. So, and it's a husky, husky with that, but I just, you know, I don't want to close the public hearing, so.
So you need a motion to reopen the public hearing for that case?
Okay, so, okay, and it's a second to the motion. Actually, it's a motion to withdraw the motion to close the public hearing, and a second to close the public hearing, and a vote. So therefore, at the meeting on the 24th, we can hear testimony.
A motion to withdraw the motion to close the public hearing.
And a second.
Okay.
Everybody understand that one? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get technical. Okay, the next item is 852 Holliston Street, 118 Forest Avenue, and modification to a definitive subdivision plan. Planning Board Case Number 2015 subdivision dash O2, continued from June 8th. Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Michael Salamondo. So again, Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of a previous hearing, really on the request for an extension of the definitive subdivision that was previously approved by this board for three lots, asking that the board approve an additional lot. It was, I believe, after the full presentation was made last, at the last hearing, there was a request by the chair that, before closing that and voting, that it was necessary to have a letter from the Health Department per the statute, and you were correct, obviously, in noting that. Since that meeting was adjourned, a letter from the Health Department has been filed. In addition to that, the department spoke with us about asking the Parks Department, Representative Chris Cassani, to also review the tree ordinance, and he also submitted a letter indicating that we're in compliance with the tree ordinance, and he indicated that in this letter that there's, in addition to the landscaping improvements that Mrs. Salamondo's making, he's also agreed to make a contribution towards the tree fund, and that's now part of the record. So we'd ask that the board conclude this matter, and we'd ask that there be a vote of approving the extension or modification of the definitive. Thank you.
Will Clums? Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? And one who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing that, a motion to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. I would concur with the testimony from Attorney Fleming. Since the last meeting, we have received comments from the city engineering department and the Health Department, as well as the Parks Department. So at this time, the department recommends that the board vote to issue the definitive subdivision approval and waivers from the requested road construction requirements for the redesigned four-lot subdivision with the following conditions. Number one, this decision includes the grant of several waivers from planning boards, rules, and regulations governing the subdivisions of land in the city of Quincy, which are listed on the sheet one of the above referenced and approved drawings. The board has waived requirements of Section 3.1, preliminary plan filing, Section 4-2.3, proposed way and width, Section 4-2.8, turning circle, Section 5-1.4, roadway shoulders and construction of sidewalks, as shown on this list. Grant of sit waivers is based on the particular size, nature, and location of this subdivision, limited to four buildable lots on a large tract of land. There shall be no further subdivision of the subject land nor extension of the proposed right-of-way without prior approval by the planning board and full construction of any extensions of the roadway to regulations governing the subdivision of land in Quincy and in effect at that time. Condition number two, the applicant shall be required to apply for a stormwater management permit from the Department of Public Works prior to any development activities. Number three, a homeowners association is to be formed to deal with the ownership maintenance issues. The recorded homeowners association trust documents shall be submitted to the planning department. Number four, this section of Holliston Street shall remain a private way in all ways, roads, lighting, water facilities, drainage facilities, and all other utilities within this subdivision shall remain private, and any maintenance thereof, snow plowing, and any other associated costs, shall be the responsibility of the homeowners association trust. Until such time as the homeowners association trust is a legally functioning body, the applicant referenced above shall be responsible for compliance with the conditions and/or restrictions of this definitive plan approval. Number five, the city shall not be responsible for maintenance of any drainage structures on private property. Number six, ownership maintenance responsibilities for the proposed recharge system and all related drainage structures must be determined and specified through deed registration or an equivalent mechanism. Number seven, a financing mechanism for the maintenance plan for the proposed subsurface recharge system and all related drainage structures must be developed. Number eight, in addition to the silt socks to be installed at the existing catch basins, the applicant shall install perimeter erosion controls at downstream limits of the soil disturbance, and shall install a construction entrance such that vehicular access to 35 and 106 Holliston Street and any other properties will be maintained. Additionally, erosion controls shall be installed such that a new inlet is protected with silt socks until the site is stabilized. Condition number nine, key inclusion with this project from an open space recreation perspective is to maintain access to Cunningham Park, a major entry point to which currently exists at the end of Forest Avenue, and it is the most commonly used entrance for anyone in that neighborhood to visit Cunningham Park's trail network. The applicant shall ensure that this access to Cunningham Park is maintained and will not obstruct access at any time. This information shall be included in the homeowners association agreement to ensure that any owners of the proposed lots are aware of this requirement. Number ten, the applicant has agreed to make a $1,000 contribution to the City of Quincy Tree Fund in addition to the substantial planting program that has been approved by the city's tree warden. No building permit shall be issued until this payment has been made. The applicant shall also adhere to any recommendations of the city's tree warden regarding placement and quantity of trees to be planted. Number eleven, the developer must submit documentation that construction activities proposed for the development of this subdivision will not cause rodent problems for Butters. A rodent control plan must be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review approval prior to obtaining building permits. Number twelve, the applicant shall commit in writing that the design of any building proposed for this site will incorporate radon control measures. Radon-resistant features that minimize radon entry are best incorporated during the design and construction phases rather than post-construction. Prior to obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall submit plans showing the proposed radon-resistant features to the Health Department for review and approval. Number thirteen, prior to obtaining building permits, the applicant must develop an adequate dust control plan, which will be required to be implemented during any proposed construction activity to ensure conformance to the state and local regulations regarding air pollution. Number fourteen, the applicant must commit to conformance with both local and state regulations regarding noise, since this project site is within a residential neighborhood, and development will likely entail significant noise generating activities. Number fifteen, state sanitary code, any residential units developed as a result of this subdivision will be required to meet all provisions of Article II of the State Sanitary Code, minimum standards of fitness for human habitation. Next, it leads to the department's report.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions from Mr. Stevens? Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, approve the subdivision process? Still moving. So a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Any answers?
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing, 661-665-671 Washington Street, Site Plan Special Permit, Planning Board Case 2016-09. In accordance with the provisions of National Law Chapter 48, Section 11, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 13th, at 7:48 in the first floor, Boards and Commission Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hay Park Street, Quincy, Mass., on the application of Jumbo Self-Storage LLC, 190 Pearl Street, Weymouth, Mass., 02191, for special permits under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 3.1.3, nature non-residential use, Section 5.1.17 parking waiver, and Section 5.3.13 signage. The applicant proposes the construction of a four-story, 122,900 square foot self-storage facility with ancillary leasing, retail office for the rental of storage units within the facility and storage and packing supplies. The site also includes a lobby, twelve parking spaces for visiting customers, a loading area, an access area for seven garage doors for direct access to seven storage units. The facility will provide office hours and customer storage access from 9:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the weekends, and additional customer access from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. Customers will be provided secure access to the facility, and three full-time employees will be hired to operate the office and facility. The property contains 66,400 plus or minus square feet of land and is located at 661-665 and 671 Washington Street. The subject property is located within the industrial B zoning district and is shown in assessment plan 2071, Lot 45, Lot 14, and 2072, Lot 35, Lot 15. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Edward Fleming again for Jumbo Self-Storage of Quincy. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a property that's known on the city's assessments plans as 661 and 671 Washington Street, better known as the boat storage yard before the bridge on Washington Street. This site includes a portion of that boat storage yard pursuant to a new plan that was created to subdivide that six, about five or six acre site by creating another parcel that includes about 1.5 acres of land. That's shown on the plan that's before you, today, that was prepared by BL Companies. I'm joined by Darrell Cusick and David Mitchell from Jumbo Self-Storage, who are here tonight, and also Andy Graves from the BL Companies. BL Companies is a company that handles basically all of the, all of the technical aspects of this proposal, from architecture, the engineering, to traffic, and Andy will be making a presentation about the details of the proposal. I just want to give you a real, just very brief background of the site, as I have. As I indicated, it's been utilized as a boat storage yard for a number of years, as well as a clothing donation center and a Quincy trucker cab site. Many of you may be familiar as you approached the bridge on Route 3A. As I indicated, the site is only a portion of the boat storage yard, about a 1.5 acre site. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a proposal for the creation of a new self-storage facility of about 122,888 square feet. It's much like the self-storage facility that was constructed and built on Liberty Street, but this board also had the opportunity to review and approve, and in fact, BL Company was part of that proposal. And in fact, BL Company was part of that proposal as well and did all the preparation of the plans that were necessary for that proposal. This is an allowed use in an industrial B zoning district. It's important to understand that it's an industrial B site. As you know, it's in close proximity to the shipyard, and it has a variety of different uses that are permitted under industrial use, including commercial and retail use. This use as a self-storage facility is an allowed use under the zoning district. However, in the recertification of our ordinance, the planning board created, or the city council created, a provision that requires a special permit for all major non-residential use, and therefore, you've applied for a special permit for major non-residential use, as you indicated on Title Seventeen, three-point-one-three. We've also requested two additional special permits. One regarding a parking waiver that was also placed within the ordinance under five-point-one-seventeen that allows for the planning board to waive the strict requirements of parking. Interestingly enough, when the city re-certified the zoning ordinance, it didn't consider, as rightfully so, self-storage type facilities, and as a result, the parking requirements for a building of this size that would typically be an office or other retail type use would require and demand a lot more parking than is needed for a self-storage facility. And as a result, we're requesting a parking waiver. This same waiver actually was requested for the self-storage facility on Liberty Street. And if you've been and you've seen Liberty Street in action, and sometimes I wonder if there's anyone there, it's a very quiet use. It's a very quiet use because folks go and deliver their product once and then sometimes don't come back again for some time. And as a result, it's a very, very low traffic generator and a very low parking demand. So we've requested a waiver, our special permit parking waiver, under that provision. We've also requested a special permit for signage. Due to the size of the building and the limited sign provisions of our ordinance, sign provisions, as you may be well aware, provides only for about sixty square feet of signage on a building of this magnitude, we felt as though the demand for signage on this building as people approach the site from the bridge or down Washington Street may require a larger signage. So what we've done on the plan is we've provided a signage box that requests a larger sized sign. And in doing so, the planning department asked us to provide a little bit more detail on a sign. I note, however, that the sign that you're seeing is not the sign you'll see at the end of the day. What it does is it represents the size of the sign. The reason I say that is because Jumbo Self-Storage is the developer of this particular proposal. However, there will likely be a different user of this facility. As you know, other users, such as extra space storage, for example, took over the facility on Liberty Street and placed their own signage on that site. So the colors and the overall makeup of the sign will be something that will be changed likely, but what we wanted to ask for is some relief on the signage that would allow a sign of that size on the building if the board feels as though it's a problem. Having said that, I'd like to turn this over to Andy Graves to walk through the proposal in more detail, both the architectural renderings and also the site related matters.
Counselor, I just have one question. Any part of this parcel, I know the boat storage land was acquired from the MWRA. Is any of that portion of that property?
I don't know if any portion of this property is owned by the MWRA.
The boat storage was.
Yeah, I don't know the history of the site.
Okay, no, not a big deal. Yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens?
And I'm sorry, I'm just going to chime in because is it a related question to that? The Fort River Shipyard is designated a deep-water port. I did review that area, and this parcel is outside of the deep-water port area. It's close, but it is outside. That's similar.
And I believe the MWRA parcel is actually on the other side of the cul-de-sac, if I remember correctly, kind of on this side, this area here. And I thought that Mr. Cashman actually acquired a portion of that when they abandoned the dock that was utilized for the ferry. Thank you. Andy?
Hi. I'm going to watch you through both the civil and the architectural portions of the project. As Attorney Clonan indicated, the parcel is located here just to the east of Four River Rotary, Bridge Rotary. There is currently a private way here. You can see this dash line here that segregates our proposed subdivision from the main river boatyard. Currently, the entire site is completely paved, used for storage of boats. We're proposing a new four-story self-storage facility. The view you see in the rendering here is taken from the rotary looking back towards the project site. It's only here at the tower, which you see is your outline here. Currently, there's a small taxi service building here with two curve cuts onto Washington Street. We're proposing a limiting number and bringing the entry back center on Reed Avenue, which is a private way, which will simplify the access. The traffic study was based on analysis, we think it was based on IT numbers, which has ten to twenty peak a.m. trips and fifteen to thirty peak p.m. trips, which is the lowest IT-generated traffic generated you can absolutely have. We've done a lot of these facilities, and for another project, we actually did physical counts for the project involved from the new, one was a hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one was a hundred-and-seventy thousand. Our actual counts were done over Labor Day weekend, which is typically the most intense traffic time for us, and we keep hour counts for their rags at eight-point-three trips per hour. And again, because it's a self-storage facility, you can imagine, people are not going during rush hour to these facilities, typically they're going weekends or off-hours, typically after rush hour before rush hour. So there is not a less intense traffic generated you could possibly have to this site despite its size. Industry standards for parking in the industry is typically one space for every hundred containers. This is a national standard that everybody uses. We're proposing to put a thousand-and-sixty-two containers, so that would typically mean ten parking spaces. So we are actually proposing twelve, ten spaces out here in front of your office and a couple of spaces in the loading area. So again, we're sort of overparked per industry standard. Typically, most towns, the self-stores are sort of just more than empty folded into a warehouse type use. In reality, this use is not laying like a warehouse, it's self-stored, and it's self-stored by individuals, small businesses, and mostly residences, residential users. So from a traffic point of view and a parking point of view, this is really based on industry standards, sort of in excess of what was actually required. From a stormwater point of view, currently, the entire lot is paved, so we're actually increasing the amount of green space by about seventy percent. Currently, all the stormwater flows in this direction to a catch basin on this side of Reed Avenue. We're maintaining the same flows, but the peak flows will be reduced in all cases from two to hundred their storm. We are providing a storm system under the parking lot for filtration purposes, so the entire roof and the catch basins along this side of the parking area are going to be discharged into a detention system for quality control and then discharged to the same catch basin to where water flows. We mean the same, but again, peak flows, because the additional green space are probably reduced. Site lighting, we're going to be using LED fixtures and twenty-foot poles. And we think that building-mounted lighting is not very attractive, so again, there's just going to be three poles, put them on the property, phase it in, well, obviously four color, and dark sky compliant. We are proposing a series of street trees along Washington Street and new sidewalks, and some nice plantings along the base of the building. We've got street trees down along the avenue for this access here, and then screeding plantings along the east side. The building is completely compliant with FIR, number of stories, and all the setbacks will comply with all the requirements. From an access point of view, when someone first comes to the site to utilize the facility, they would come in off of Washington Street, the parking spaces are here in front of the office area. Again, we want to highlight and make it simple and intuitive to use the facility, so the office area is in this glass element here with the glass tower above. Once you're into container, there is controlled access at these locations, completely secure. We have a code, we punch in the code, the gates are open, allowing access to the loading area. The loading area is located in the center of the building, and we have, I believe, eight roll-up doors, which are protected by canopy, are served to a rear facility. Again, we're using some architectural elements to highlight the loading area as well. Any questions on any of the site point of view?
Yeah, I do. So if Mrs. Blatz is going northbound on Washington Street, and she wants to go into the facility tomorrow after going through Wigglesworth Circle, she's going to take the left out of there, that's a nightmare. That's a nightmare, in my opinion.
Right.
Given the traffic that's coming, that's just gone over the bridge, come through that rotary.
Right.
You know, I think one of the things you ought to consider is a one-way pattern.
Well, the issue is that there's so little traffic here that if this was like a pharmacy or something that had much more intensity, I'd point, we'll take, and we certainly look at those issues. But normally, the normal movements with the amount of traffic, you would have to do something more significant, and again, we'll review, of course, and if we can figure out where we're doing that, we will. We would expect in time, we have full rights for this entire Reed Avenue, which would make circulation a lot easier. So that may mean, you know, eliminating this island and allowing circulation to function more easily. But again, because there's so little traffic, again, eight-point-three trips per hour and typically off-peak, that the fact is, what we're...
The limited amount of traffic will quite mitigate the possibility of this here. And conversely, you know, I agree with what Counselor's comment about little traffic is on the one over Liberty Street, because I have an occasion when I'm gassing up to notice that, and I've never seen anybody parking there, but trucks, I mean, you know, I'm not talking about eighteen-wheelers, but I'm talking about, you know, at some point in time, some, again, somebody wants to have storage in their truck, and I don't know whether you've got maneuverability, whether you've got the ability to, never mind that access off of Washington, but the ability to maneuver within that parking area in order to back into the unit or whatever. I assume you've taken that into consideration, or will take that into consideration.
Yeah, we've done a lot of turn on our I S U thirty-three there to make sure that all the three movements are achievable. In addition, once the unit's rented, access can come off of South Street, and there'll be a keypad here as well, so people, once they get their unit, they can come through this intersection down South Street, and Reed Avenue coming this way. So it really is like people, when they first come to rent the facility, they're forced to come this one way, but after that, then a lot of circulation. Again, we've got two access points for a building, it's almost zero, not zero, but variable traffic, as well as some that will just be managed.
Okay. I'm sorry, I need to...
To your point, so the ingress and ingress off of Washington right now, as designed, somebody could take a left turn out of the facility if they wanted to, but it really wouldn't add too much of a burden to make it so right turn only so somebody has to go around.
Yeah, absolutely, we agree. Taking a right turn out of the facility and not going left out is fine because they can come to the rotary and turn right out anyway, so it's really not, wouldn't be much of a burden.
So that seems like an easy fix. Just for the benefit of the other members and to echo what was raised by the counselor and by member Meade, I walk by the storage facility on Liberty Street every morning and often on the way home from work, and it's like a ghost town. There's no activity during the peak rush hour, and so I'm comfortable that there wouldn't be a reason to assume that this facility would be any different.
From a utility and, you know, just, it's so, it's a less, utilities in a four-story single-family house, there's just a couple of avenues in there and traffic, I mean, this is benign a usage you can possibly have, and you're talking about traffic.
And that said, I do have a number of other questions, but if the presentation ongoing, maybe I'll save them.
Yeah, just to quickly walk you through the architecture?
Yeah, good.
Any other questions from the woodmen as well?
Yeah, just a quick question about, so the property that is going to be used just for the storage facility, is no other?
Absolutely, no other uses intended. For this portion, we have no control, obviously, for rest of the block. We're subdividing, and this is just for this portion, you know, separated by Reed Avenue, so we're not having control over it.
But the owner owns the boat storage unit.
That's right, and he's going to maintain, they're maintaining ownership of that portion of the site. They have no present plans for that.
Okay.
Do we have any idea where the, how the bridge will affect it, if it gets into the rotary? Like, corrupt this a lot?
Yeah.
No?
Good question.
It's an involvement. Believe the rotary remains.
That it remains. And one last thing, probably the utility connections will probably all come out of South Street, and most of the water, sewer mans and stormwater are pretty minimal, the only sort of large line, you know, fire lines, sort of, so that's all coming out through at South Street and the electrical transformer, I think, for the silt, so it won't be visible from Washington Street and the main track. Very quickly, there's not a whole lot of programmatic involved with these buildings, just to reinforce what I said earlier, there's a loading area, a couple of elevators, and a lobby here at the center of the building. The office area, where they sell, you know, minor accessory packing supplies, a couple bathrooms, and a couple of evers there, otherwise it's just containers, upper floors, or whatever the floor, things like that. So this is the facade that's facing Washington Street, this is what the facade, as you can see, that faces the parking lot. The intent was to sort of create a sort of modern, clean building with still some traditional proportions, so we put in a nice base and base to give it sort of a scoring base, and then a brick tower with a glass top. You'll see the use of the building through glazing in this corner, and then nice high-glazed area in the office area. There's all the split-faced block with a brick color, and then cast stone plinth at the bottom of all these pilasters. The windows would actually be real windows in storefront, but because there's a storage canopy behind it, it's in the spandrel glass that's reflective, but they will not just be paper, it's going to be real windows.
Excuse me, can I just ask you?
Sure.
Because these people can't see it. Wood has copy of the plan, so the public... I didn't mean to interrupt here, I'm sorry.
Well, not at all. So again, the base is going to be a split-phase block with a brick color. Gives a bottom and a base to the building, a nice heavy color, earth tone, sits on the ground nicely. Above are horizontal metal panels, again, these are not typical Butler Building-type panels, the orange bill finish, these are architectural-grade kind of panels you'd see in office buildings, so it's a smooth texture, is a metallic finish. To sort of accent the tower, we've added a different color metal panel here, sort of recess to sort of set the office tower apart, make it more prominent as you come down Washington Street. We've used brick to frame the loading area, the canopy for weather protection, again, we use cast stone plinth. This lighter color split-faced block forms accent bands, to sort of give it a rusticated base feel, and then again, we're using the same high-quality architectural metal panels, and again, real windows, and again, we have the spandrel glass to be somewhat reflective so you can see through the panels. And in the back, you can see we have extra roll-up doors, again, surrounded by nice split-faced block, and then, and then, again, a canopy over the top for weather protection. The side that faces Reed Avenue, again, progressing up, there's public access to this way, so we've got a lot of street trees and sidewalk out front, and sort of street trees to frame that facade, we're doing the same split-faced block with the accent band, as you can see, and again, the... the architectural grade metal panels and windows. Where the building abuts, we're joining commercial properties on South Street, we've just kept it simple back there, sort of row of trees, and then evergreens grow up the screen, just at the back of the building from the landing. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Any questions or comments?
You go ahead, keep the building. Mr. Barry? Yeah, thank you for the presentation. This area is, I don't know, many areas in Quincy fit the term gateway better than this area, and this is going to be the first structure that individuals coming to Quincy see. And I just want to preface my comments by saying that I'm a fan of this project in general, getting rid of what's there.
Sure.
It's, I think it's the right use for the project, I think there'd be a minimal impact on the neighborhood. But what I want to make sure, and this goes back to the discussion that we touched on a bit with the storage facility on Liberty Street, is that this is a large building, and it's going to be visible from many different angles, making sure that we're putting the right aesthetics in that area. And so I thank you for bringing in samples of the materials, because that's really important to me, is seeing what the building is going to look like. And I think that the front facade is looking exactly like what I hope it would look like. What I'm curious about is how we can get less uniform, flat-wall-looking space, more windows, more, hate to use the term architectural flourishes, but something that breaks up the monotony, and so I go back to that storage facility on Liberty Street, if you look at the back of it, it's a drive-through, a drive-in movie screen.
Sure.
And facing, you know, the neighborhood, and I think it's, I think until something gets built, you don't often realize how big it's going to be, and the impact that it could have on the neighborhood. And so I think that this board has the benefit of, I think that's a similarly sized project to what we're talking about right now.
General sense, yes.
And so, especially the back of the building. So a question that I have for you is, I know that, so when I say the back of the building, I mean closer to the, further away from the bridge, there's a house next door, yeah, that's perfect, yes, I'm talking about that, and I'm having a hard time thinking how visible that will be from Washington Street, so if you're going down Washington Street toward the bridge, I, I'm thinking right now that most of that back would be blocked by the house on the corner. And...
I mean, despite the fact this is a four-story building, the floor-to-floor, these ones are lower than a conventional, say, office building, an office building could be as a fourteen or fifteen, even sixteen-foot floor-to-floor, depending on the depth of mechanical checks, these are only eleven-foot floor-to-floor, so those four stories, it's really, you've got forty-five feet really to the roof of the building. If it's proven, we certainly would object to wrapping some of this nice facade around the corner here, if you think that it'd be visible, we also need to study, from a dimensional perspective, photograph, to see exactly what is visible coming down Washington Street, and how high this, you could sort of model this in here, so you can really get a good feeling for what is visible here, and we certainly can bring some of this, if it's visible, we can bring some of this around the corner, we don't think it's going to be that visible at this point, but we can certainly study that.
Yeah, it's something I, if you could come up with a rendering of what that would look like, that'd be very helpful for me to, to just think about the impact on the neighborhood for the benefit of the board, I'm sure most of you know, this is a corridor, definitely in need of updating, but there's a bunch of projects, not just on cleverly court, but also up and down Washington Street that are either kicking off or about to kick off, and I think this is just a great addition, but that would just be my one comment.
Okay.
Can you talk just a little bit about the use of the tower? Is that decorative? There's a storage facility on Old Conley, and they have a, you know, sort of a glass area, and they put mannequins and things like that in there. I'm just curious, is there a thought in terms of the use for that area? Is there really offices in there, or is that just open space with glass?
Well, in what exact, if they want to do something clever like that, to link up to the actual user, the first floor is looking to a real glass office area, that have, you know, activity and people in here, employees down in that area. Above, really, it's sort of fake corridors, so you'll see the actual use of the glass doors, and so it's as much visual interest as a self-storage facility can provide, but I think the architecture of the tower and the glass, the doors behind it, give it some visual interest, it's just not a black wall. And we think that the basically base and the glass, it breaks up the facade, it gives it some visual interest, a nice white cornice, again, to your point about architectural flourishes, certainly we could, yeah, it's a sort of a trick that we were trying to play these buildings, and even though it's four stories, because we have large windows, it almost makes it look more like a three-story building. And I, you want, you're sort of walking a fine line between adding too much detail could make it busy and look even larger, but certainly we could go a little further and maybe add heavier cornice, maybe some trim around the windows, maybe a few more windows, so again, we're always walking that fine line between keeping it simple, and that keeps the scale down versus adding too much detail, but certainly something different.
One more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this is more of a business question, so I'm not sure if it's for you, but as has been pointed out, we've seen now a couple of these storage facility projects, and I guess I'm a little surprised that a couple of these are coming up, and I don't know if you can, is there a demand, and can you point to why we're seeing a couple of these? Does it have to do with developments happening in Quincy now, or is there some dynamic that, you know, we could be aware of that is spurring this phenomenon?
Do you want to respond to that at all? Or I'll just step aside.
Hi, Daryl, do you have a second? Yeah, there is a demand that's based on multifamily, the more multifamily you develop in the city, the more storage they need, so there is a demand, we put quite a bit of money in these, and we wouldn't do that if it wasn't. We do develop along East Coast as well, so we pick Quincy as a town we want to develop.
It's a just interesting point, so we're seeing more multifamily developments in Quincy, and those residents typically need space for their stuff.
Maybe on extra clock.
And then this facility provides that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just more comment than a question, I'm not a big fan of storage facilities, and I think they add nothing to the neighborhood in general, but I would just echo Mr. Barry's comments about, you know, most of them are really, I think, from the castle in Wayman to the orange and yellow thing in South Boston, you know, you don't, we don't want anything that's going to be garish like that, but also the starkness of the white wall, I think, is also something that, you know, we wouldn't want to avoid.
Yeah. That's actually a question that I had, is in our rendering and the package...
This is the color here, it's not white, it's a metallic silver color, this is the body and the building color.
Oh.
Yeah, we're wondering the same thing, whether it's white or whether it's black.
It's, I mean, on the computer screen, it looks one way to turn out to another, and you go back and forth and shit, just write sometimes...
Although I will say the Liberty Street facility, which I rent by all the time, is probably one of the better-looking storage facilities I've seen, so.
Yeah, we designed that one as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have two. The traffic in the, is that existing curbs on Washington?
Right now, there are two curb cuts, so we're consolidating the ones, we're actually eliminating one curb cut, maybe one or two that exist.
Okay, so there's no need for a curb cut from the state?
Correct.
Another question, is there a twenty-one E on this site?
A which?
A twenty-one E hazardous material?
Yeah, so phase one, phase two are done, actually, we were surprised since it was a gas station in the past, but that was all cleaned up, and the, all the U S Ts were removed, so actually, we were expecting more environmental issues here than actually we found out, but it actually is, it was cleaned in the past, so it's a relatively clean site now.
Take a copy of that, we could get a copy of that.
Sure.
For the health of the public.
Sure.
And there is a section within our, I think our planning department guidelines that talk about gateways, and some of the features that you can do with gateways, so I, you know, you may be already familiar with it. Would you suggest taking a look at it?
I got a question. Want to go back to the signage and the request for an exemption from the normal signage requirements, I just want to hear again of why whatever is normally allowed doesn't work for this project, and why you're requesting a lock and sign, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, that's okay, and I don't know how well I explained it, I think that, I think that the size of the building, I think maybe in prior examples, where they constructed buildings without requests for waivers of sign requirement, they realized that after the fact that the signage provisions of the city's ordinance were very limiting. In Quincy's ordinance, probably one of the most complicated sign ordinances in the state, it limits the sign to sixty, to only sixty square feet, which is very small on a building of this magnitude, hence why we requested the waiver. I think the waiver request, I can look up and down the head of the document.
We're proposing two hundred and fifty, and a second sign, two signs of two hundred and fifty square feet.
So what we try, so what the planning department asks that we do is really provide an example of what that size would appear like on the building, it was hard to imagine what a, what two hundred, you know, square feet would look like without having an example on the sign, hence why we provided the junk-of-self storage sign as it appears today. It'll be much more tastefully rendered when it's designed by the particular sign company that occupies the building. It was just done in a very standard, simple way, right now, just to provide, you know, the size.
That's helpful, and so that kind of gets at what I'm trying to understand, so what ends up on the building could be something that we're not even picturing, right?
It could be less, it could be less than that, but it won't be greater in size.
But the font could be different.
If you want, say, it has to channel letters, it has a particular font, we're perfectly ready to do that, so.
Yeah, and so a question for the planning department is, is there usually a submittal to make sure that the planning department find with the way the sign looks after we would, you know, assuming that we approved this project and we gave the variance of the sign requirements, that did it eventing to make sure that the sign was actually going up, and, you know, regardless of whether it was within the square footage that we approved, met the subjective criteria of planning department.
Yeah, correct, I think this is, you know, what we asked of the applicant, you know, prior to having any commitments for a final company, we asked that they provided the sign band, so essentially, this board would approve the sign band. The details, we can, you know, craft a condition and also work with Heather Sargent in the director, in the Inspectoral Services Department, who oversees the signage and during the building permit phase, on the actual details. I would say any further variance that triggers additional review would probably bring that element of this project back before this board for their approval, anything we can handle internally, and I think that's happened in the past, too, with some cases, I think most recently, the Compass Medical Building in the rotary near the highway, I believe they came in later with some, just sort of sign components for that building, so it is common for this approach.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, Mr. Barry, I think the issue of the sign on the Liberty Street building was something that wasn't even discussed. It was shown on a plan, however, when extra space came back to install the signage, I believe they worked, I'm not sure if they worked with the planning department, but they worked with the building department and designed the sign, and that was approved in that fashion, so we can agree of a condition, that it be worked, that the design of the sign be worked out with the planning department in a review setting, or with the building department, that would be fine.
That would be my concern, thank you.
And the design of the sign, I think on the extra space signage on the Liberty Street building, I think it was nicely designed, it's a tasteful sign, I believe that that will happen here as well, whether it's extra space or someone... Thank you.
Any other questions? You go ahead. No, sir?
The only, the only other point that I'd like to just address, and it was already addressed in the site plan, but you can notice the green space that was created on the building, both on Washington Street, on the back of the building, as you indicated, Barry, and on Reed Avenue, that was specifically designed in response to questions and concerns raised by the planning department as we were preparing the plans, because of the gateway setting of the building, and the goal was to be cognizant of the neighbors in the rear of the building, to try to dress up and create as much growth in landscaping as we could on the back of the building, and you'll see that there's significant plantings along the back of the building to really shade that from the abutting neighbors, I know there are some here tonight, as well as the green in the front along Washington Street, but also in the back on Reed Avenue where there are some residents as well. So those gateway concerns were certainly addressed, in fact, Councilor Crowell is here, and he made that very clear to us as we were designing the building, to try to add some architectural elements to the building, but also to the landscaping. And I know Councilor Crowell's here, and can speak to the neighborhood meeting, but he did hold the neighborhood meeting, which I know he mailed the neighbors, and we had an opportunity to present the plans to the neighbors as well. Some are here tonight that didn't attend the meeting, but there were a number of folks that did attend the meeting and expressed a level of support for the proposal. The biggest concern on Washington Street, I think, for many of the neighbors, is traffic. It's a very well-traveled street, and misuse, although maybe exciting in a lot of ways, I get it, is a low-traffic generator, very low-marking generator, and as a result of that, really has very little impact on this area, it doesn't add to the existing problem that's ongoing, so, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I would ask anyone that'd like to speak, be recorded, come forward, there are also sheets over on the window ledge for those that don't want to speak, but I just ask you to identify yourself.
Bill Shigah, Bill Shigah, I'm still in Bud at six thirteen South Street. The whole problem we have with this, we know that they do building close to us, but it's twenty-five feet of my back door, and I'm looking at that back wall, the whole thing is they're going to take the sun, it's not going to shine on our house when it rises. We rely on the sun to heat that house, melt all the snow and ice in the back, because as you know, we get a lot of wind, a serious wind problem on South Street, I don't know if the city knows about it, I know about it, because I can't find my barrels all the time, but it's a wind tunnel, and it will blow in any direction. And I see problems with the height of the building, why does it have to be four stories when they're saying there's not that many people that go there? There's not that many people that go there, they don't need four stories. Our building's two stories, we won't even be able to see the sun, we're going to be in the shade when the sun rises, back of our house is going to get ice in the wintertime with the gutters, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to get damage to our homes. We're going to damage to our homes.
Unfortunately, I don't have the high-tech stuff, but this is the, I can download, but that's second story looking down, there is twenty-five feet, it's not that I can show it to the outlet, there's only sort of a... So right there where that gray is, it, that's the, the second-story window, the sun comes up over the bridge, which is beautiful, okay? The sun rises from, and sets in, and east in the back, so that sun, that sun coming up makes it very, very pretty where it is, where the water comes, it is, it does kind of make a statement. I know that, you know, there's been trouble with the, with that panting, but basically, we literally talking about, when they show the, the line here, it's, they're dropping in, it's not correct, because what it is, is here's South Street, and then the view, it looks like it's all big, but basically, it's really five feet, and then it's gonna, it's gonna go huge, they're gonna go twenty-five feet set back, so that goes from, and up, which I know it's on, but nothing is over, nothing around that area, this is up over four, four stories, two stories, even the old, what is it, the Pizza Hut or whatever, that's, they want... Even the old, what is it, the Pizza Hut or whatever, that's, they want to take that, but realize they couldn't go up any further, and that's on Washington Street. So that was turned out. But all the businesses along Washington Street aren't hitting this high level. So, yeah, my feeling is that it would be, unfortunately, it got so bad, it goes up so high, it'll take away from the thing, but it would be into their best interest to, and I questioned it, to buy them out, to buy out the, the property, because they minimize the people. You've got the Shinetts on six fifty-three Washington Street, that's business, and they wrote, I saw, they said, well, those people, they don't, ah, they're, you know, they're kind of, and there are people living there, and there is, and there is a small yard, you know, and the whole sunlight coming down there, and you know, if you want to give the vision of Quincy, you know, it's up to you people about Quincy, how it's going to look. It's going to look awful, it's going to, it will look like, like you can run a movie there if they wanted. And then this property here, the backyard, the whole, the both lines flow together, and then it goes twenty-five feet up, and so it just, it'll just go, that's going to go four, it goes four stories, and it has to go a five-story for the drainage and all that. So then you're going to get into problems with, you know, the basements, because they really don't know what's really under here, and this is how the DPDW, the water, the sewer thing. But, yeah, there is a good chance of breaking concrete cell, which is considered square footage, but City of Quincy attached on that. It's not cell that is out, you know, like you think that in a hundred years, there are cells that are considered square footage. So, yeah, and there's going to be the rodent thing, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot. The thing on, on that, I, and I understand that they minimize, they say Edward and Ellen Campbell, they've been divorced fifteen years, people, and it's like he owns that, and it's all broken up. They say these people here, this is Mr. and Mrs. Quincy housing. Well, just check them right off, throw them off to the side. So I can see where, you know, yeah, and where the foundations are right up there and everything like that, you're going to be banging in, it's going to go into the gutters, into, all over, it's going to stay high. As a nurse, when I first got the property on Model Street, it was a two-family, I was expected to have somebody come in and test this, the first floor, and I said, only my mother's going to live here. He goes, no. And this was in ninety-six. He said, the reason why is because the shipyards, they painted them with lead paint, and he told a story about how the workers would go with two cans, one for their lunch and one to fill up with paint, and then he would bring it back and paint the lot, the property of Quincy, correct? So that, he said, and I goes, what's this, my mother, and then he said to me that, he says, the problem is that there's too many kids still turning up at hospitals with high, with lead, it's in the dust, you know? No, I'm just going to say, it's like, it's amazing, they say it's going to be enormous. It is, it's going to look just like, you know, they could run a movie on it, and why don't they just do that, just, you know, charge, and why don't they just, yeah, it would be to their best to say, yeah, buy out the property.
Well, but, excuse me, for the record, which every name and address?
Eileen Norris, six thirty, unit four.
Thank you.
Built in two thousand, that is.
What I tried to get to was, you didn't mention the soil, you say it's going to be tested, tested. It's a shipyard, you know, a hundred years, and the whole area was a shipyard, the ground, what's under there? Have they said anything about rodent control when they dig down into that ground? There's rattle there, size of my cat, and I got a big Himalayan cat, all right? I see them, all right? The rooms in there, the soil, when you dig down, they're talking about taking out the fence, kind of everything, well, when you take all that stuff, how long is that stuff going to be open before they lay those pipes, before they do the drainage? I know there's a problem with the drainage system that they're proposing, you know, because it comes right towards our house, to our foundations. And I see flooding, when they, when they take that black top block, I see some serious flooding in our basements, which are our living rooms, because on those condos, it's three floors, living room is in the basement.
And what are Charles' premises? Who pays for this at Charles?
I see flooding happen. You're going to be pushing all this water, and you're going to be pushed towards us because you're taking the black top block there. Where's it going to go? In the ground, towards us. And plus, you propose the pipes under there, and I don't know where the sewer pipes are, I was trying to read the blueprints the other day, and I'm like, it's sort of like they're right behind us, and it's like, I see flooding, damage, when they build this building, with the wind that's going on that we have there, and there is some serious wind, and anyone that lives there will tell you how serious the wind is there, this stuff's going to be flying. Where's our house twenty-five feet from the hole? Where's the dirt? Where are they going to put the dirt to take it? Because the boatyard's still going to be there, a lot of those boats, that, you know, they're one point five acres, all the boats are still going to be there, which our wood council's complaining about, since I saw, but they're still going to be there. Why do we have to build a building there? We don't need any more self-storage in Quincy. I agree with the guy, it's going there. We don't, we don't need that building, right there. It's going to screw up the water table underneath the house, it's going to flood our cellars, we're going to deal with eighteen months of construction. I'm a truck driver, I've been to every construction site for the last five, three years, built in Boston, one twenty-eight everywhere, I've been on the sites from beginning to the end, all right? You've got a problem, building, bring the trucks in here, bring the stuff in there, you've got the steel, everything. Where's it coming? It's going to have to go in the rain, down south. Across the street from us, we have an apartment full of toddlers, infants, kids, that all play on their front lawn there. You know, wait, kids of the, in the Shinette building, I'll call it the one on the corner, Jack Shinette built it, all right? There's kids up there, teenage kids, well, ten to twelve, and maybe a little younger, they have to play in the driveway, in the back, all right, because they don't get out of the field without the adults. I see problems. I see damage to our house. I'm going to be in the shade for eternity. How would you like to be in the shade for eternity? The building's too tall, just, you want to build one of those things, usually they're one-story, you see it, you know? A four-story, come on, we don't need it. Quincy doesn't need it.
It's not seen anywhere on there.
You think that's pretty, I think it's ugly. I go by that site in my house twice a day in my truck. I start at Roxy's, and I go to Citroen Harbor by truck, and I come back. The traffic, sorry, but their numbers are off, all right? I'm in it, I'm out on that road all day long. Lot of traffic, you can't cross Washington Street anymore. Pushed their button, you made five steps, where more, they were coming at you, all right? It's a bad place, traffic, electronics, you all have your cellphones out on the table there, right? What do people do nowadays? I watch them all day long, I'm on the highway all day long. Everybody's on their phone texting, you got that entrance here on Washington Street? You got a light? When they leave that light, they're chubby, start racing towards the light at South Street and Jerry Green, turns green, most cars are doing fifty-five miles an hour. And then all of a sudden, and they're all on their phones, everybody, all of us, you see it, I see it all day long. You're going to have major accidents like that in such a, somebody is going to take the left turn when he's going north when he's not supposed to, because it's a double-lined road. If I want to go to the gas station, I got to go to the road and return around, or I get a ticket at the cop's seat, they give you tickets there. It's a dangerous, dangerous street, and it's too close to the houses. I can't see how we can do the construction and not damage my home and everybody else's by the way.
All right? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants, would like to speak or be recorded? Counselor?
Good evening again, I'm in for the duration this evening. For the record, Brad Crowell, two-city counselor, and, you know, listening to the comments of the residents, and I had the opportunity to speak with Bill for quite some time, and, you know, it was a very nice conversation. With any type of developments, particularly when you're backing up the residents, you're always going to deal with our residential issues, whereas I know this hearing is going to continue this evening, I believe that my, the expectation is that the applicant will continue to work with Bill, and I'm sorry to catch your pronoun, Eileen, to, you know, work through some of those issues, but I just wanted to, without, without running, you know, the risk of recycling everything that we've already heard here this evening, I am a huge proponent, and, you know, I'll be captain obvious in this one. This is a gateway to the city. For a very long time, the first point of judgment you made when you came into Quincy, City of Quincy, was a dilapidated boatyard. We're in a position right now to change that, and I feel that's positive. You can agree or disagree with the business model, but when I assess a twenty to twenty-five million dollar investment in what is now a boatyard that leaves a lot to be desired, conceptually, that looks, looks pretty good. Now, when you take in the residential concerns, there's some mechanics that have to be worked out, Chairman Barry, I mean, you nailed it. My expectation, you know, I think the storage facility in West Quincy, it's okay, it's okay. The expectation, I think, in this building is to really bring out the aesthetics of this particular place, and much to your point, break it up. We don't, we don't necessarily want the big blocks, you know, and heavy landscaping and all that other stuff, and I would just sort of like share with the residents, I know Bill and I had talked about it, but any plan that comes here is going to be subject to a couple of things. Basically, an engineered opinion by the City of Quincy, as well as a third-party consultant. So that's kind of the benefit of coming through this process, is we have a buffer in, so we're not necessarily taking the applicant's word for it, we're going to go and subject the project to a different merit through a third-party consultant, so that's all a good thing. Again, I'm always looking at it from, you know, a taxpayer perspective, too, but I mean, you know, the city is evolving, no question. So every time that we look at a what's commercially used parcel, and we turn around and we build residential, I mean, essentially, we're flipping the tax base. So we're in a position right now to keep a business, and if businesses don't, essentially paying a premium in terms of taxes, which is good for the residential ratepayer, and knowing the zoning confines of this particular district, I know that there are a lot of different, a lot of uses. I had heard once upon a time, not too long ago, that there was talk about a supermarket going in there, and speaking of somebody who represents a constituency that abuts a supermarket, there's a whole other set of issues that come with living in that particular space as well. So I guess my point is, we're looking at a business model that's, that will make a significant amount of investment into this particular property. It's known to be minimal, minimal impact from a traffic standpoint, and some of the other residential mechanics as it relates to your property, I would anticipate that we'll work through between this hearing this evening and whenever you folks deem that you'll continue this conversation. But I did post a neighborhood meeting, feels like an eternity ago, and folks did come out that live, actually, your neighbors, and did put forth support for this particular project, because I think that everyone knows, you know, what's there right now, there's a lot of room for improvement, thinking that's the first point of judgment that a motorist, right? Thirty thousand cars a day going over that bridge, that's the first point of judgment that a motorist makes coming into the city, is what's there right now, and I think we can do better, I really do. So with that being said, my understanding is you're going to keep this open for a continuous, but that's, that's the re-destigged version from the neighborhood meeting. Any questions, I'll take them.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
As the counsel points out, we don't have all the information, a peer review, we don't have a peer review report, we're also waiting for several other review documents, so I would extend a motion to continue this public hearing until, I think in August or September.
I think August is fine.
Okay, August twenty-fourth, is the motion set?
Set.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon.
Thank you. The next public hearing, one fifty and one fifty-four Quincy Avenue, site plan special permit, planning board case two oh one six dash ten, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight. Excuse me. Section eleven, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, at eight forty-eight P.M. On the first floor, boards and committees involved, thirteen oh five Hancock Street, Quincy, Mass, in the application of Lawrence Agniti, Jackson Development LLC, twenty-one Franklin Street, Quincy, Mass, eight oh one six nine. For a site plan review under Quincy zoning, excuse me. Quincy zoning ordinance title seventeen, section nine point five, site plan review and special permit under section five point one point one seven parking waiver. The applicant proposes to construct five new three-story residential townhouses containing seventeen units. The five buildings contain thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-six plus or minus gross square feet, containing approximately six thousand seventy-four plus or minus square feet of living area plus garage. The proposed development site contains ten thousand eight hundred and forty-seven square feet of land and is located at one fifty and one fifty Quincy Avenue. The subject property is located within a residency zoning district and is shown on the assesses plan two oh eight five C, as line five and six. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington, my law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway, and I represent Lawrence and Anthony Agniti in this application. Before we jump too far into this, I'd like to point out that there was a clerical error in the notice that you just read, the lot area for this property is thirty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-seven feet. I will make sure that the agenda is corrected for the continued public hearing and that any other postings that are made by the planning department have the correct information on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for having us this evening. As you said, we're here for site plan review. The property in question is thirty-six thousand square feet of land in residency zoning district. It's two parcels of, two parcels of land that are being combined together to create the thirty-six thousand square foot lot. In the residency zoning district, eighteen units are allowed by right on thirty-six thousand square feet of land. When I first met with the Agnities, we made a decision right from the beginning to design a project that was within the amount that was allowed by the zoning ordinance for the property, without trying to put an extra ten or fifteen or eight extra units on the property, but to stick with what is allowed by the zoning ordinance and design something that works well and that fits well. We spoke to the ward counselor a few times, I had a neighborhood meeting, we met with the owners of the condominium project next door, talked to them about their concerns as well as construction issues, and making sure that they're not impacted by the construction of this project. The first version of the plans for this project, all of these townhouses had a master suite and a finished attic level, so each one of the units was a, was a three-bedroom, two and a half bath townhouse, with a master suite with a walk-in closet and a full bath on the top floor, which would be the fourth floor. Councilor Crowell expressed a concern to us that with three bedrooms in every unit and having two parking spaces on the first floor of each unit, the parking could be an issue if there were more than three, more than two cars for that unit. So the first change that were made to the plans before the neighborhood meeting was to eliminate the master suites that were in the fourth floor of all of these units. So today, the units are two bedrooms, one and a half baths, and their design is very similar to a lot of the other townhouses that are being built in the city today. Two-car garage on the first floor, living space on the second floor. A two-car garage on the first floor, living space on the second floor, living space on the third floor. Uh, at this time, it's proposed to have an unfinished attic that will be used for storage and utilities. And as you can see from the renderings, the, uh, attic level doesn't have, uh, dormers or, or windows in the top level. Uh, again, this is a, uh, project for site plan review. Uh, we have also filed with the zoning board of appeal. The case is pending. Before the ZBA, the hearing was open, uh, we presented the case to them, uh, and they asked us to, uh, delay their vote to approve until after this board has reviewed it and approved it. Just, again, to repeat just a bit, we've got thirty-six thousand square feet of land and the FAR in this project is point seven four. Our zoning would allow a maximum FAR of one point oh. Uh, so we're not asking for more units than we're entitled to. We're also not asking for more size or floor area than what the ordinance allows for. Our residency allows a six-story building that's up to sixty feet tall, uh, will be a three-story building, and even if you measure to the ridge line for, for the attic, it's a forty-one feet. So we're much lower than the maximum height that's allowed. And, uh, the only significant variance that we're asking for from the zoning board is for the setback of the units on the right-hand side of the property as you get toward the back of the site. Uh, the setback on that side gets tight, and that's essentially the most significant variance that we're asking for on this project. Uh, with me tonight is, uh, our civil engineer from, uh, from Bay Colony Group. Also, we have our, our architect, uh, from Brian Saluti's, uh, architectural office. And Jack Gillen is our traffic engineer, who's also here this evening. Also, the Agnety brothers are both here. If you have any questions for them, uh, we'd be happy to answer them. And I'd like to turn it over to our, our civil engineer first to have him describe the site and what he's done on the site plan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley, and I work at Bay Colony Group in Foxborough, Mass. Um, what I'd like to do this evening is just talk us, talk you briefly through, um, the site. What I have up here is a blow-up of sheet three, which I see that, uh, most of you have in front of you all already. So, as Chris talked about, this is a thirty-six thousand square foot lot, and I'll just, you know, kind of use my printed data outline, we've outlined it here in yellow. Uh, so a front sign Quincy Avenue is about a hundred and seventy feet of frontage. The lot itself is about three hundred feet deep, uh, from front to back. And the rear, it narrows down to about seventy-five feet. Um, you can see over here on the left side, you have a condominium, a building, runs al- almost along the entire, or actually does along the entire left lot line, along the rear. Uh, there are the homes which along Martinson Street. And over here on the right side, uh, this, this large vacant lot has also a home which fronts on Quincy Avenue. Um, you can see here, there are two existing homes on the site, which is a total of five units, uh, between the two buildings. And there's also a garage in the back here, just behind this building on the right. And they take up approximately the front third of the site through, for their, the building itself, the parking, um, and the garage. And then along the back, it's, it's mostly scrub. Uh, the woods get a little thicker in the back toward the rear, but for the most part, it's kind of secondary growth in that area. Um, the landscape plan has the location of the, the larger trees, nothing from a lot up on the side. The, uh, the topography of the lot is along Quincy Avenue, it's about elevation fifty-two. And then as you go back toward, like, the back of this house here on the left, so say maybe seventy-five feet back, there rises about eight feet. So it goes from fifty-two to sixty, and through to by, which I'm sure most of you have, you can see that just from the driveway ability, if you're looking up toward it. And then, but then beyond that, it starts to drop off pretty good toward the rear. Um, and in the back here, it's the lowest part, there's a little depression in the rear, and that's about elevation thirty-eight. So it's a twenty-two foot drop from here to here, and then an eight-foot drop from here to there. So it's a little bit of a, a hub in the middle of the property. The, um, the proposed project involves, so we're bringing, we're demolishing the existing structures on the site, coming in off Quincy Avenue through a single driveway, twenty-four feet wide, and then running, uh, an access drive right down the middle of the site. There's a total of five buildings on the property, um, one five-unit and four three-unit buildings. So the three units are here on the left, there's a three unit in the front, and this, this is the five unit here. The, um, the site steps down, as I, as I discussed, so it's not practical for us to have, uh, site. So what we've done is we've stepped down the units as we go toward the rear. And I think if you look at this, I know maybe some of you can't see it as I'm blocking it, but this, um, here, you can see how Brian has stepped down the houses, and this is the five unit, and so you can see how we've stepped it down. And that's trying to follow the topography of the lot as best we can. Each of the buildings has a two-bedroom, and Brian will talk more of this, each of the bedroom, each of the buildings has a two-car garage. And so there's two vehicles, two cars inside for each building. Uh, we have, in the back here, in the back right corner, there's an additional five parking spaces that we've added in there, and that was, um, during discussions with town, staff, and making the ZBA, we had some, uh, parking here. In addition, I know it's hard to pick up here because of the way the, um, the shading is, but if you look on your sheet four of the plans I gave you, a better layup, these first two buildings, the first one on the left and the first one on the right, the driveways are wide in those particular, in that particular area, that those homes can have cars parked outside in front of their garages. So we don't count that in our, um, parking count, like, for practical purposes, people will be parking there, because they won't be blocking the driveway. So what, and we talked about, or I talked about, this site steps down, but we, we can't step it down enough to pick up that whole grade. So in the rear here, along the rear property, kind of where my line is, where my, this is the last building on the right, this is the last building on the left, we've built a wall along the outside of it. And the, that wall is about, it varies, but it's about five feet high, especially along the back. We've actually dropped it a little bit from our original design, because again, that was a, a concern of neighbors, you heard that from the ZBA as well. So it's about a five-foot wall, and it's gonna be a, one of those, they call them stone strongs. It's not a poured concrete wall, it's those big precast blocks, but they have texture on them. And they'll, you know, have a fence on top of it because of the height. So that's gonna hold up the back of the site, um, in order to, to match the grade. And then the, the wall in the rear here is about twelve feet off the rear property line at its closest point. One of the other things we've done, again, I, it's kind of tough to see it here, but between the first building on the left and the second building on the left, you'll see a, an area we've painted, so we've cut it down, and again, it shows, I think, better on sheet four. And what, what that is for is for two things. The first is, is we're gonna put dumpsters in there. So right in the back, we've tucked some dumpsters in there, and the, this section will also have a wall around it. So it's not like you'll be next door and be able to see these dumpsters, they're down below in this cutout area. Uh, so those dumpsters in there, and they'll be appropriately screened. But that's also, we've designed it as a turnaround, an emergency access, not an access, but an emergency turnaround for public safety vehicles, because we understand that the traffic on Quincy Avenue is always a concern. It's something we've been hearing about from day one. So a public safety vehicle or any vehicle, the mailman, your UPS guy, the Amazon driver, you can pull in there, you won't have to back out on Quincy Ave. You can pull in, pull into the turnout, back up, and go out. Or a, a fire truck, we've modeled it so that your ladder truck could pull in there. So the ladder truck could go down, back in, and pull out without having to back on the Quincy Ave. So we think that was an important, um, element of the design. The, one of the comments we received began from the, the city staff and from the ZBA and neighbors, is how difficult it is to come, to come out of the site and go left. So we agreed to put it at the middle-left turn sign, right, sign right here at the entrance. So vehicles coming out of there will go right. The, um...
Can I stop you just for a second? Is it gonna be a sign or is there gonna be a curb cut forcing them to go right?
Right now, it's, we're just showing a sign.
Because, uh, if, in my experience, if no one's enforcing those type of signs, then nobody cares at all, um, very quickly. And so, um, is there enough room to make it so that you angle the egress so that you have to go right?
Yeah, I need to put it, do you mean like a concrete island?
Yep.
A, a, a triangle with granite, correct?
Exactly.
And it out, uh, yeah, I think there is. Um, Jack probably talks a little better than me, but from my point of view, the similar guy, yes.
I just wanna plant that seed now, like, if we're talking about middle-left turn, not talking about a sign, what are you talking about?
Mr. Barry, we just want to be very careful. We met with the fire department, spoke to them about this turnaround for the engines.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure that we don't restrict that driveway for fire, emergency vehicles getting onto the property.
Understood, thank you.
I'll just make a note of that.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No problem. Uh, one of the questions we had, I talked about trash, I mean, I gotta, we addressed that. Um, one of the other issues is, or questions is, is the mailbox. So we put the mailbox in, in here, and it's, this is the first building on the right, there's a small island, and then, so it's between the first and second buildings on the right, so mailman will be able to command, it'll be a, a single mailbox for the site. Stormwater is always a question that we have to address and give a peer review. So what we've done on this site, it's, it's a, it's not, it's not great soils. It's not like sand or anything like that that goes well. It's, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, we hit refusal, which is either boulder or ledge, oh, we had a big machine there, we weren't getting through it. Um, there's, there's some, some bits have filled, probably over the millennium. Uh, if you look at the old USGS maps, uh, this area back here, uh, this used to be a brook. So this area has obviously been filled over the years, and, um, you can, you can see that when we started digging the holes. So what we've had to do is we designed a system where we take the stormwater and put it underground. And what we're proposing to use here in this particular site is, uh, we'll use twenty-four-inch plastic pipe that'll be set under the parking lot. And what I've done here is kind of outlined it, so there's a system right in here, and there's a system in the back there, and it's about three hundred and twenty linear feet of pipe, embedded in stone, that will be captured by catch basins, um, in the front and in the back, and the roof drains will be piped in there separately, because that's considered clean water. So we wanna get that into the system without running over the dirty asphalt. So it will go into that, it will be, um, a small fraction of it will be recharged, but it will be detained in order to maintain the flows, because as I talked about earlier, this is the low point of the site, everything pretty much runs into this area right here. So we're gonna mimic that, we're gonna continue to allow things to go in there, but we'll be controlling the rate of runoff in there, as we're required to do under the D E P storm watch standards and under the, the local Quincy standards. And we'll be controlling the rates such that for the low storms, it will be the same as it is today, and that's a two-year storm. In the big storms, um, it'll be up to a ten percent reduction. So we'll be reducing the rate of runoff or holding it at the existing rate, which again is, is the standard that we have to comply with. Perhaps some, we've done some water quality and low-impact development elements into this. The first one was the one I talked about, which is taking the roof runoff and running it into it separately. The other thing is, is we put some tree box filters down here at the end, um, because everything is going that way. We've got two tree box filters down there, so the light runoff will go into the tree box filters and then be, um, discharged into the piping that I discussed about. Lighting is a question. There is, there's no parking lot lighting, because there's really no parking lot here, these are just homes facing each other. So right now, what we're showing is, um, they'll just have lights on the building, as you, you have at your home and I have mine. You know, you can see them here on the front end of the garage, which is the lowest level. And then we will probably have them in the back too, by the, the spire, just like you would a general. But there'll be no lighting right now, and none that we're proposing at this time. And I think that, uh, pretty much covers it for now, just a question.
Any questions in the boardroom?
What about snow removal?
Snow removal, I think if you flip to sheet, I'm not sure what sheet, sheet ten of your plan set, what we've done is we've put together a snow removal plan on, um, where we're gonna be putting the snow on the property. Now, uh, a pop, it's obviously, as much as you ask questions. So the areas that we're proposing snow removal are in red on this, and it should be also red on your smaller set. Um, so what we've done is we've shown the areas. This, of course, is the makes-the-most area, because you're just gonna push it off the end of the driveway and be storing it. That's all the grass area back there, we've left it that way just for that particular reason. There's some small areas in the front that we can use as well, because as I talked about, you know, the site pitches that way, so it goes from there, there, and there, there. But really, this is kind of the breakpoint. So you'll be able to store some s- snow in here, um, because you'll push it that way from that point, but then the rest of it should be able to be pushed back here. And there's quite a bit of storage, I think we estimate, well, we can store up to twenty-four inches of snow on the site, making some certain assumptions, which we've done other projects in the city, and it's the same assumptions we used before. And after that, it will have to be trucked off. So after twenty-four inches of snow during the season, if it doesn't melt, it would have to be moved to a drawn-up space.
Any other questions in the boardroom? Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I also like that Brian Saluti?
My name is Brian Saluti, I'm a public department project. I'm in the one company, Brian Saluti, I think, we're working. We are proposing seventeen units, um, they will be colonial-style home, uh, townhome-type buildings. As mentioned earlier, four of the buildings will have three units, and there'll be one five-unit building as well. The buildings are, um, three-and-a-half stories in height, and they'll all be wood-framed construction. They'll be, they'll be classified as type five-A construction. Buildings will be fully sprinkled, including the attic. Materials for the facade will include, over here, we're looking at vinyl clapboard from Ceratite. We've got three different colors selected for the project, Sabra, Desert Pem, and Charcoal We'll have architectural shingles to the roof, and they will be black.
I'm not gonna lie to you.
But I'll give you that. Um, there'll be double-hung windows with shutters throughout. And other features include, uh, stone veneer, as you see here. We'll have that along the base at the front and the sides of the building. There'll also be wood decks at the rear. Um, so overall, they'll have a colonial style for them. As far as the layouts go, as mentioned earlier, we'll have, the first floor will consist of two-car garage with a campel and storage available. Second floor is the living area, and the third floor will be bedroom level, and there'll be attic storage as well. The basic unit is, uh, twenty-four feet wide, like twenty-six to twenty-eight feet deep, uh, with a total of, uh, two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet. And that includes both the garage and the attic. It's kind of brief, but, uh, who will approve this?
And, uh, finally, Mr. Agnety, would you like to have a rapport with you about his ownership of the property and what his plans are for it? Thank you.
Want me to talk to you, or do you want to have Jack come as well?
Hi. Thank you for, thank you for having us here, appreciate it. Uh, our family's owned the property for quite some, one of the properties...
Excuse me, may I introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, thank you. Tony Agnety, uh, we have, we have many insurance at many properties in the City of Quincy. Uh, longstanding business people, my brother Larry's here, Larry, Larry's with Kenny Construction and the Agnety Properties as well. And, uh, our family's had the property for quite some time, my brother and... My brother and I acquired the property next to it in order to obviously develop this particular property. We were asked at one point to try to pick up the third piece of property to make it all, all in conjunction with, next to Alindes as well. And we did make an attempt to do that. We made generous offer. We worked within confines to try to work that through, but that did not happen. Our goal here, obviously, I'm in the city. I've had my business, my 30th year of business with the insurance business. I've been around for quite some time. I intend to be here for quite some time. And my son's here, so if I'm not, they will be. And we wanted to do something that we can be proud of in the city. That's why we chose to go, as you said earlier, we were looking to just do what we could do within the guidelines of the city. We wanted to do something that we would be proud to be near. We like the home approach, i.e. the townhouse. We've talked to many people in regards to a building-type quality, but we feel this is more, this is better for the neighborhood and better for what we're looking to do. And all I can say is, we as property owners, business people in the city, and longstanding members of the city, we're looking for, obviously, a win-win. Win for the city, win for us. And that's, I'll quiet down. You can narrate to me, give me the, hit on the leg to kind of quiet it down.
Jack Gillan, our traffic engineer, is also here. If you have any, you know, specific questions about the traffic, I'm sure you'd have to answer them. I think as all of you know, this project has not been peer reviewed yet, and we don't have comments from the city's traffic engineer yet, but Jack is here, and if you have specific traffic questions, he's happy to answer them. Thank you.
Barry? I do have a traffic question, but we'll get to that just so I can visualize the view from Quincy Ave. The red maple trees that are going to be along the frontage, just kind of picture what they're going to look like. So I see the, on building number one, is the west side elevation facing Quincy Ave, the latest on A4 of the planes. I'm just trying to get a feel for when you come down, say, back to the park road, and you're looking right at the project, what you're going to be seeing. Because I see those two trees on either side of the curb cut, and they're labeled with red maple. I'm just trying to understand if they're going to be relatively large, so they sort of block, block the driveway, I mean, block the parking space behind it. Because I'm happy with the aesthetics of the building. And thank you for bringing the materials up. Very helpful to understand what it's going to look like. Hopefully, I might be being man of words.
This is, this is building, building two. So that's the side of building two, right here, that will face Quincy Avenue. And the trees that are on the landscaping plan are not indicated on the architectural rendering. So there will be, there will be a tree here and another tree here, blocking the view of the porch. And building one is the building that's on the left-hand side. And again, this is what, this is what it will look like from Quincy Avenue here, of that tree and that tree. That tree is in place, but there's another tree here that's not indicated on the architect's plan.
That'll be obscuring the parking space a little bit. There will be mature trees.
Yep.
And often tall enough that you can see under, but large enough to be aesthetically pleasing. And that's what I was trying to confirm, so thank you.
Just to that point, it sounds like you're going to continue this project. Would it be possible to show a rendering of what that would look like? I was curious about the same thing. And then, you verbally described it, but it might be nice for us just to see what that view would be.
Yeah, and we could, I mean, we could add, we could add some landscaping to this area here, as well as this area here, of little bushes, so that there are bushes there, so that you don't see that first parking space.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
We also have cedar impressions on the, you know, on the side, the street side as well, because of course, that's the main appearance. We want to make sure that looks, that looks proper. That with the stone and the relief, and we've jetted and we've put, we've put the building so it's not a straight line. We're trying to make sure, make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing, not in the eye. And then, 10 years from now, it still looks, they still look like townhouses and homes. Yeah, so the traffic concern is just trying to get an understanding of what the projected vehicle trips are going to be, income out of property at the peak hour. And a special concern for anybody who's familiar with Quincy Ave is taking a left off of Quincy Ave into the property and just, you know, trying to get an understanding. Your take?
I think you all have a traffic, my name is Jerry Gillen, Gillen Associates now, after being in the public sector for 46 years in Boston, Brooklyn, Queens. Anyways, yeah, I did do a traffic study, and I think it's available, but some of the highlights on that, Quincy Avenue, as some of you know, does carry about 40,000 vehicles per day. And the speed out there, the average speed is about 30, and the, we've alarmed, the rate I've got about 35 miles an hour. I'm going to tell you how I use some of those things. But as far as the trips associated with this particular project, I use the Institute of Transportation, which is 15,000 reach manual. They give you projections, it's countrywide, about what the empirical data is, and there's quite a few studies that are available, and probably millions of houses by this point if we started doing this back in 1971, taking the empirical data. Based on all of that data, the 17 units will generate seven trips in the morning peak hour with one in at six out, and in the evening peak hour, it will generate about eight trips with five in at three out. Now, these trips that we're talking about, this is during the peak hour. Now, we assume the peak hour is going to coincide with the street peak hour. Whatever we count in front of the, after the turning movement, it counts from seven to nine in the morning, and four to six in the afternoon in 15-minute increments, and the four highest to second in 15-minute increments, that was the design hour that we looked at. This says that people coming out of the development aren't all going to be coming out during the street peak hour. Some of them are going to be coming out a little bit earlier, some out later. They're not going to come out exactly during the peak. But we assume for design purposes that the peak generation from that is going to coincide with the street peak. So that's the assumption we made, this is how we made the analysis. Now, when I was out there, I was out there for quite a while. I put a machine down there, I checked it every day. I went out there, I looked at the site distance, I made mention of this out there, we'll get to that in a second. But I also watched all the traffic from seven to nine in the morning, four to six hours, traveling traffic and everything, on right front of the street at, at Faxon Park Road and Quincy Avenue. And the development right down the street from us, right between where we are and Scamble Street, though we took a left out of it during the morning peak hour, I mean, the traffic backed up almost to the top of the hill. Not all the time, but it did. And down there, no one took a left out of it for two reasons. One, it was easier to get into the first lane than it was to try to get through the second lane and out into the third. The other is, the site distance that we look at when traffic's really moving, that's really not available when traffic is queued up two cars deep, and someone lets you sneak out because traffic might have gotten the green light of Scamble Street, starts hitting up the hill, and your, the driver's eye is 8.5 feet behind the bumper. So he'd have to be into that travel lane before he could see the car coming up the hill. So nobody's taking a left turn out of that one during the morning peak hour. And I suspect this is going to be self-enforcement here, is that if you want to go left, you'll end up, during the peak hours, during the peak hours, you'll probably end up coming around the block, you know, Scamble and down, south, back out, limited, des moles and all of that, stuff like that. If you want to go the other way, you might take a left onto, onto Lynch and, and come up, Faxon Park Road, come out the other way and take the right. When you come out of Faxon Park Road onto Quincy Avenue to take the right, you do have that out here, you could be out the center of the town at Scamble Street. So you're able to take that right turn. In fact, I thought you might like this, I looked at it during the, the peak hours, come out of Faxon Park Road onto Quincy Avenue. Now Quincy Avenue's carrying about 1,600 cars during the peak hour. Coming out of Faxon Park Road, I said 20 were taking the left going to Scamble Street, while 327 were taking the right, going the other way. And that's during the evening peak hour. During the morning peak hour, it's pretty much the same thing. 18 were taking the left, and 145 were taking the right. You can see what's going on. The return commuter trip is coming down Faxon Park Road, that's not that heavy in the morning, but it is in the evening, people coming home. You know, so the ones taking the lefts, that really want to take lefts, they either have gone a different way, all these shoot-down Faxon Park Lane, they're going up. We don't get to tell people to do that, you know? If you live there, you'd be home on, you're living there, you know? You know, you're going to do it, you know? But, so, we don't think that that many people are going to be coming out of our site and taking the left during the peak hours, because if they do it enough times, they're going to know it's safer, it's quicker, take the right, go around the block, and maybe they'll adjust at all times, something like that. You know, put the sign up, absolutely, but I understand what you're saying, and I've been in the public sector for quite years. So when, one of the most effective signs, I think, is coming down McDonald's. You know, McDonald's, if Southern Avenue, that sign is there, there's nothing to stop the guy from going left. But very, very few people try to cross the 50,000 car down that area, I think it's 55,000, try to take that left at that particular point. They'll take the right. But there are a few examples, and I'm not going to say where, but that I know that they do take the left turns and, but mostly not during the peak hours, mostly during, and especially when you get traffic all backed up like that. And I'm sure as concerned about the fire truck, because I like self-enforcing, but when you don't have enough real estate other than 24 feet, it's kind of hard to not just put a little delta on it, but to, you know, so they don't go something and make a stupid move. You really have to try to get a channel, but I try to corral them and pull them in so that it's very impossible, almost impossible to take the left turn, I've done this before. But you need a lot of real estate to be effective in that. And the fire truck, I don't think he'd be able to maneuver if we got raised curbing in this particular area. I think we kind of watch it, see what happens, if it ever did happen. The other thing is, if you take a left out of there and there's a sign up, and there's a collision, it's fundamental that you're responsible for all that, you know? Because you knew what the sign said, and you'd be using the bay, so. I don't think that's going to be a problem that initially I thought it might be. The site distance is really good there, too. The 35 mile per hour to sign speed does require about 246 feet of site distance. When I first looked at the project, I don't talk too much, when I first looked at the project, I was wondering where the driveway was in relationship to the vertical curve. And, you know, how it is a little bit further east of Alindes and up the hill there, because I wanted to show that we had the site distance. I knew we had a little bit of a history there in the past. I thought there was a couple of times, three, maybe six times. But anyways, that vertical curve is further away from the site that we're looking at, and we have about 500 feet of site distance in both directions. So the site distance is more than that for, for the site that we've been coming in and coming out of. And I also looked at the crash rate at Faxon Park Road and Quincy Avenue, and the fact the crash rate was a lot, in terms of crashes per million approaching vehicles, was only 0.37. The statewide average is 0.61, almost double that. The reason the crash rate is so low, even though the conflicts are there and the volumes are there, is most of those vehicles are coming out in what? Turning right. If they were turning left, your crash rate, I'm sure, would have been a lot higher. But because the crash rate is tied into the sheer number of approaching vehicles, and most of your vehicles there are going straight through Quincy Avenue, and the ones that are turning are turning right. So that's probably why the crash rate is self-enforcement, I think, in terms of that and what I have to say. Anyways, that's pretty much it, is the volumes are not high, and there aren't sufficient gaps to turn in and out of it. Our driveway will have the steel of the service coming out. Faxon Park Road, we know where Accapelli coming out of there, and we're adding an additional 2.4 seconds per approaching vehicle, and that's not going to be noticeable to the Quincy neighborhood. And I'll begin with any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Is that your conclusion?
That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'd ask anyone who would like to speak on this issue. If you don't feel comfortable in speaking, will you sign in sheets on the windows sill over here? Anybody that would like to speak in favor or speak? Why don't you come up? Identify yourself.
My name is Ernie Arianti, was in Springfield Street in Quincy. I think this is a great project to move forward here, that it's going to fit in there nicely, it's going to clean up the area there. I wish they could do something with the property across the street also, because it's such a disaster there, that it's been cleansed in for quite a few years now, and it's, but this here is, I think, will increase the property values around the whole area, and will really clean the place up, and they'll do as good as you have. I've known them for many years, and every property that they have is top notch, and I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Tom McConnell, 186, we're near Quincy Ave. Our family's owned the home there for 75 years. We like the project, and we're fully in support of having the project be completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
He's at 194 Quincy Ave. I've lived on Quincy Ave 55 years. So many people are talking about left-hand turns.
I've seen them all.
So I fully support this project. I think it's great. I look around the city, and I look at the billion dollars that it was spending in downtown. I look towards the north side of Hancock Street, and you look at Central Junior High, you look at Temple, and you look at all the developments. Then on the south side, which is the gateway to the new Quincy Square, this project is great for that. And there could be a few more in the area, too. As one person said, the property across the street would be great.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else like to speak?
Evening, council?
Thought you had enough for me tonight, huh? My wife tells me the same thing. For the record, Brad Crowe, Wood Two City Councilor, you know, I know that we had character profiles shared here this evening about the Atkins, Larry and Tony, and I echo that sentiment, you know, longstanding contributors to the community, and I certainly appreciate that. I did, we've been working on this application for quite some time, so I know there's been a formal neighborhood meeting and several variations after that. You know, I think about this project and, you know, the area, and, you know, listening to Mr. Gillen, you know, we probably did spend way too many weekends out there trying to quote-unquote "figure it out." But, you know, it doesn't take a genius to realize that there is a noticeable traffic issue on Quincy Ave. I mean, I look at the composition of this board, and I know that more than 50% of the board, so you know exactly what I'm talking about. And just, I guess, for the record, small victory, we did finally get that open property to cut that along across the street from this project area, so, just for the record, because it's sometimes it's like pushing a boulder up the hill, but, you know, a couple things. So I was on my way over here today, I saw a comment letter issued by the DPW through maybe the planning department, right? Sue Karim sent that over about maybe five o'clock this evening. So I'm assuming that we're going to dig into that data a little bit more, and I know we talk about things such as drainage and parking, and there's a whole host of other items in that. And I know we talk about things such as drainage and parking and there's a whole host of other items in that piece of paper. Like I said, I was literally reading it off my iPhone and my hair. I think the property that's there right now, you know, would certainly be improved by the replacement of, you know, some sort of development. Well, my question always is with everything, it's not standard to this project. You got to see me just about on every project that takes place in my ward is parking, right? You're either going to get it right or you're going to get it wrong. And the only time we have to get it right is right here. That's the way I see it. In Quincy Ave, it's not equipped, lack of that aware, to handle any offload parking with potentially some of these other developments. I don't know that we ever look at that either. And to Jack's point, when, you know, he kind of spoke above, and I'm going to paraphrase here. You know, we'll kind of see what happens with the left turn and then address it accordingly. I mean, I feel that we're in the situation now that we address those things here. I mean, I'm in the business of hopefully mitigating as much risk as possible. And I'll go on the record and say that, you know, I worked with the residents and some other, do not turn left, translated in a native dialect at one of the local supermarkets. And for those folks to travel that corridor, you know that that is, it's not followed. So I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that, you know, it seems to me, based on that opinion letter from the Department of Public Works, that there's more work to do on this project. I think something could work there. I just want to make sure, particularly for those folks living on the Marcus Street, that we properly address and contain any potential runoff that may or may not take place in this problem, right? Because the unintended consequences could be that they end up with a built-in pool in their backyard. And I know that's not anyone's intention. So I'd look for maybe a third-party peer review to weigh in on that. But again, it comes down to, comes down to parking and the applicants, you know, the traffic is, this traffic there, right? No question. It's how do we put ourselves in the best position to make sure that we're not overly exacerbating what's already there? And, you know, that roadway in particular is in dire straits. So I hope that's a whole different conversation, but we'll keep working on that one day at a time. So, I mean, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is going to be left open? There's going to be more data that's going to have to be aggregated before we go anywhere? So that's basically the sentiment coming out of the neighborhood meeting. I know some folks in the condos, Director Bartis, had notified me today. You know, I'd shared with them that they couldn't be here, but there'd be an opportunity sometime down the road for them to weigh in with some additional comments. But no question, I mean, I think the applicants will do the right thing. I just need to make sure that we mitigate as much as possible while we're here. So that's my comments. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Congressman. So as the council points out, we're still waiting additional comments. So I entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until...
We go in August? We can go with August.
Okay. All right. So continue this public hearing till August 24th. So discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all. Any other ideas?